I'm adjourning to close session and recommiting open session. I want people to know at the beginning, when we first convene, we changed the agenda so we could hear two items earlier, discussion items A and B. We moved up after action item A, so we can talk about the strategic plan and OIS block schedule update. This comes a little earlier in the agenda than where it's listed. So we've already made that change. We're now recommiting open session and reporting out how to close session. And in closed session, the board voted manlessly to release certified employees from their temporary employment assignments for the 2017-18 school year and directed superintendent or designated to so notify the affected employees. And now we have pledge allegiance, and we have a new tradition. We ask a member of the audience to read us. And Riley Moran, you don't find meetings in the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we have our initial public comment period. Thank you for those who sent us cards to speak. Persons may speak on any item that isn't listed on the agenda. Speakers are requested to fill out the speaker card, state their name and address, and addressing the board. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments for any items for not more than three minutes in order to allow everyone who wishes to speak the opportunity to do so. Groups are asked to limit their comments to a total of 10 minutes. The board should limit the time of public comment to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, and if additional time is needed, the public comment will continue after discussion items. The other important thing for people to know about public comment is that under public record rules, public comments are a chance for the public to bring issues up to the board. The board cannot address you during the public comment period. It could well be that issues that are in public comment will come up otherwise in agenda items, which then the board will be talking about those items. But the board is not allowed to respond to public comments. That doesn't mean you can't bring questions, bring your concerns, it's just we can't have a dialogue with you during that public comment section. This is your chance to bring things to attention to the board and us, the agendas later if we need to. That being said, why don't I start with the public comment cards that I have here? And at the top, I have Charles Shannon.
Distinguished members of the board, community staff, and anyone else who's here, welcome. I have a resolution. It's a Calvary Teachers Association resolution at this time. I think it's really important with all that's going on in our country. It's a resolution of unity, resolve, and resilience, a call to action for public education that all California students deserve. And I'm just going to read the top part. Public education is the foundation of our 21st century democracy. Social justice for all begins with equality, free public education. Our public schools are where our students come to be educated in the fullest sense of that word, including as citizens of this great country. As educators, we strive every day to make every public school and college a place where we prepare the nation's young people to contribute to our society, economy, and citizen. California must continue to lead the nation. The 325,000 members of the California Teachers Association are committed to making sure all California students get the public education they deserve. We ask all Californians, including elected leaders, regardless of party affiliation, to join us in supporting a strong, inclusive, safe, and innovative public education system that ensures all students can succeed regardless of their zip code. Our public schools must remain centers of our communities and not become corporate profit centers. We hold these values because all children, regardless of family circumstances, where they live, where they were born, how they look, who they love, or the language they speak, have the right to a public education that helps them reach their fullest potential. I'm going to leave this resolution with the superintendent, and would love to have you take a look at it and possibly sign a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Hello, my name is Naomi Greenstone. I have a second grader at Glorieta Elementary School, and I'm at 79 Rain Boulevard. I learned this morning that over the last couple of weeks, there have been one to two swastikas drawn on the school bus window that services Glorieta and OIS. The father of one of the students who rode the bus is here today to speak about it. There are several people who've come to condemn this incident, but there won't be time for them to speak during public comment, so I wanted to ask those people to stand, or if you're already standing, to raise your hand, so that folks here can see that this is a matter that many people think is important. I also want to thank trustees Carol Brown and Hillary Weiner, Principal Ron Langer, Principal Michael Randall, and the facilities director Stuart House. All were quick to condemn the conduct and have a desire to get to the bottom of it. What my request is, is that there be a quick and appropriate investigation, and that there is proper educating and training of students. For example, the Anti-Defamation League has a No Place for Hate program that's free for schools that I can provide information on, and a clear statement that there's no place for hate in our community and that everyone is welcome.
Robin, what is it?
Paulino.
Paulino, yes.
My name is Robin Paulino, and I have, my address is 109 Artith Drive, and I have a second grader and a fifth grader at Delray. And I want to share, number one, that on the first day of school, we're new to the district and to the school. We moved from Washington State. The first day, I was nervous about my fifth grader adjusting to a new school. He came home and said, "Mom, it was better than my old school. It was so inclusive, Mom." And so I just want to say, like, number one, I think you're doing a great job, but I think things are shifting. And when I saw the news about the swastika, or swastikas on the bus this morning, it was shocking to me, and it was more shocking that the swastikas had been there for more than one day. And I think when you have hate symbols like that, and they're up for more than one day, you either have people who don't know what they symbolize, who don't care what they symbolize, or who are scared to speak up against the crime and feel, and don't feel safe. And so I would like to ask that the board consider additional training and programming for the schools. I know at Delray, we have the Think First program, and I briefly looked at that. And I think that over the past few years, schools have done a lot with bullying, but I think now is the time to start incorporating how to combat hate. And I would second looking at a program like the ADL's program.
Thank you, Rob.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. Again, my name is Ethan Schneider. My address is 8 Beaconsfield Court. I have two kids, a second grader and a fifth grader at Delray. And I'm the first within a group of three speakers who are coming tonight to ask the OUSD school board to publicly reaffirm the district's commitment to students of all backgrounds, and that you consider placing this on a future agenda. On top of being an Arinda resident, I am a professor at a University of California campus. And two of the things a number of my students have come forward and spoken about, and these are specifically students of color and Muslim students, is that they question whether they're welcome in this country anymore. And even in the state of California, they've spoken of this. Now, it might be tempting to suggest that in a place like Arinda, we need to have no such concerns, that we're in a town of tolerance and acceptance. I believe that such an attitude would really actually suggest a great deal of complacency on our part. I have a friend, a gentleman of color in Arinda, wonder aloud if the color of his skin has made him and his children less welcome in this city. And in fact, the stories we're hearing today about the school bus truly bring home just how much we have to actually pay attention to this sort of thing, that these concerns are very real and increasingly relevant. Three weeks ago, I was present at an Arinda Children's March in support of diversity, in which Arinda kids expressed their worries about intolerance. Nevertheless, issues of diversity are far from straightforward, and we owe it to the kids, to the staff, and our families to be clear about the welcome place of diversity in our schools. I teach Think First classes in multiple grades at my school, and one of the principal messages within Think First is the importance of recognizing and accepting the things that make each of us different from one another. Our ability to get such messages across to our children is much more potent when reinforced and introduced by all of you, to really make it a core part of what's happening throughout the district. So again, we'd like to request that OUSD publicly reaffirm its commitment to students of all backgrounds, and that you place the topic on a future agenda. And I'll leave it to our other two speakers to be more specific and detailed about what it is we're requesting. So thank you very much.
Next in that lineup, Richard. Weinfield, is it?
Good evening. My name is Rich Weinfield. I live at 8 Southwood Court in Arinda, and my daughter is a graduate of OUSD. And we moved to Arinda in 1991, when I took the position as superintendent of schools here at the Arinda School District. It's been a while since I've been back. Things have changed a little bit, for the better. But some things haven't changed. It was an excellent district then, and I know it's a great district today. But I am here to support the idea that the issues that we're discussing, hopefully, will put on your agenda for some discussions. As great as the district is, we need to make sure that it stays that way, and that we need to live our values. I just want to share a little bit from a couple of other organizations that have already gone down this path. Tom Torlukson is our state superintendent of public instruction. And Dr. Torlukson wrote that, "Please join me in declaring our public schools safe havens for students and their parents. Since the election, reports of bullying, harassment, and intimidation of students based on immigration status, religion, or ethnic identification are on the rise," and fortunately, statistics support that. And there was a national call to action. The American School Superintendent's Association, the National Association of Elementary Principals, the National Association of Secondary School Principals, National PTA, and the National School Boards Association. So pretty much all the mainstream organizations have essentially said, "We applaud the many schools and districts that have taken meaningful steps to develop and support positive school climate in their communities." And that's really what we're requesting, that this go on the agenda for some conversation. These are challenging times, and they ask us to really take a look at and reaffirm our own personal values and our community's values. So we hope and trust that we'll be able to have this conversation here at the school district in some future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Melanie Hurley. I live at 8 Beaconsfield Court in Arinda, and I have two children in the Arinda Public Schools. And I'm here to support the idea that we'd really like the board to create a resolution or a letter to family and a set of actions that help to affirm that this is a safe place for students of all backgrounds. Districts very similar to ours, including Piedmont, Talawalto, Pleasanton, Carmel, and Hillsborough, have already made such resolutions or sent letters to parents affirming their commitment to students of all backgrounds. And we've provided the board with a packet of these letters and resolutions to give you a sample of what has already been done. We've also prepared a legal summary prepared by the Association of California School Administrators. And just speaking as a parent with two young children, in the last few months, my children have been frightened by the rhetoric that we've heard around us. And in our schools, while we felt it's a very safe place, there has been no forum for discussion, or really, I think that the teachers have not necessarily felt that they have permission or something that they are able to say, something that would be comforting to students. And I'm really looking for an opportunity for our children to have a sense that their school supports children of all backgrounds. So in summary, we seek a resolution containing the following three elements. One, a statement reaffirming the district's commitment to the success of all students irrespective of their immigration status, ethnicity, race, religion, sexual orientation, ability, sex and gender identity, socioeconomic status, or ideological beliefs. Two, a statement that immigration status will not be provided to authorities nor immigration enforcement action be allowed, except with prior written approval of the superintendent. And three, activities and actions to support diversity at the district and school level, such as hosting a day of understanding across the district, offering professional development opportunities for all levels of staff, endorsing activities determined by the school, and communicating regularly with staff, students, and families on diversity-related issues. Thank you very much for considering this.
Thank you, Melanie.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Bauer-Kagan, and I have a TKer and a first grader at Sleepy Hollow. And I just wanted to come tonight because I have both of my children, including my five-year-old daughter, ride the school bus. And when I heard what happened, it made me nervous, that the school didn't know about what was happening on the school buses in our community. And to me, I have always thought of it as an extension of their school day until they arrive at my house when I'm standing there. And so I want to ask that there be some sort of investigation or inquiry into why the school didn't know that these swastikas were on the bus, and that it wasn't brought to our attention until a second grader brought it up with his father. And then the second thing is, I also want to reiterate my desire to see a larger-scale education program put into place related to this kind of hate. I think the ADL program is great, but I think we need to reconsider our anti-bias education, because clearly, there's something going on that we're not addressing.
Thanks, my name is Todd Nobby. I live at 25 St. Hill Road in Arinda. I have two kids that currently attend school here at Glorieta, a senior ordiner, and a second grader. Over the weekend, it was my son who had said something to me, asking me about the meaning of the swastika on the bus that he had seen on a recurring basis, and whether or not it was related to Nazis. And it was, you know, there was another child, another second grader in the car. Initially, I was trying to have a deep conversation, but driving in the car and trying to recognize, you know, to look at your kids living on the road in the air, to see their expressions. And it was, it helped me pause and just think about, you know, that we don't tolerate in this school system, you know, antisemitism, race-religious discrimination, hate crime. And it's really, it does need to go up to another level. And I have to commend the bus driver, so I don't really want to make sure, you know, make sure we recognize. The bus driver went to my wife, Madeline, and told her about the swastikas, and it actually was a fifth grader that told Ethan, my son, about what that was. So it's an opportunity that, you know, it's hard for me to explain to them when there's a fifth grader, trying to explain to them, because they've seen another bus on a recurring basis. So I, you know, I sort of echo what Rebecca and Naomi and some of the other people have come here to talk about that, beyond some of the basic programs that it does, we recognize as a school district that it's just not tolerated. And it's not about an elementary student being on a bus, because these kids share the bus with middle school kids at a different time slot, or high school child. So I just think that there needs to be further recognition that it was there. And it's not just my son, a second grader, on the bus, it's, you know, other kids, because a fifth grader recognizes what it is and tells my son, you know, well, that's what that is, and you're having a hard time having him comprehend. So, you know, with that, I would like to, you know, pause and first of all, thank people for echoing my thoughts, and I do want to appreciate Hillary's efforts for also directing with us in real time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last card we have is for Susan's. Is it Stephan?
Stephan.
Stephan, thank you.
My name is Susan Stephan. I live at 7 Arinda, 7 Resa Court in Arinda. So I have three kids in the school system. I have one at Delray, one at OIS, and one at Miramonte. I also work at Glorieta. And I know at Miramonte, they have the Diversity Club, as well as the MLGBTQ Club. I know how active they are, but at Miramonte, they seem to have a little bit better of a sense of themselves. However, in the younger grades, I'm starting to notice, as well as many other parents, that they're not feeling very inclusive, whether it's, and the kids are starting to be concerned, and they're expressing it about whether it's race, gender, their sexual orientation, and sort of how they feel. So I wanted to echo others' comments in regard to an inclusivity statement, because I think that would really help the kids.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, we're going to move to our reports.
Logan, Charles Shannon, OEA president. It's good to be here tonight. I want to thank Jason, I met with him this week. We decided we're going to start having a monthly coffee. We want to bring more transparency. I think it's important for us to have open dialogues, so the board is aware, you know, outside of this meeting, things that are going on that are important to our members and important to the district and the students that we serve. So I appreciate that. This week, I also saw Cara Hoxsey. She's assigned to our school. We've seen her frequently, and I really appreciate that. I know that other board members who are assigned to the other schools are making sure that they too get to see what's going on at our sites, because a lot of exciting things are going on. I want to highlight the fact that, following the group that got up to talk about inclusion, is we had a diverse abilities week with a variety of activities for kids to understand that there are so many different abilities, and all of our abilities are special and unique, and it's important to celebrate those. We definitely got to see that this week. It was amazing on Friday when we had the diverse abilities fair. We had a variety of folks with different challenges, but many, many, many strengths. And it impressed upon the kids that we're all very important, and we deserve respect and dignity, and I definitely think that they learned that this week. I also want to bring up the fact that the district, for the past couple of years, under Kathy Marshall's leadership, has been doing a history social science work group. Members from each of the school sites are meeting to talk about making our schools more inclusive, and we've been working on lessons, and we're going to be working with our colleagues on those. So it's something very, very exciting, so I appreciate that. Outside of that, I want the board to know that we've had an important topic. It's about the University of Pacific credits. It was brought to OEA's attention that we have teachers who are taking those and receive official documents that have been signed by the professors to state that they are receiving semester units for the work that they've done, and they've met our criteria according to our contract. Currently, we're not in agreement. The district's not wanting to give full credit, although they're saying that those who are in the pipeline will receive the full semester credit, but beyond that, they're not going to be signing them off. We're very concerned. We're going to be meeting again on the 16th, because we feel that it's in our contract, it has to be honored. We're not going to sign an MOU. What we want to see is that the district does what they've always done, and that is approve those semester units. I just thought it's important for you to know, because it's an attract and retain issue. We feel we're not going to be able to attract teachers, because we know other districts in our area are accepting UOP units, or other universities, like Chico State, for example. I met with a gentleman there, and he said that almost all his districts accept the full semester units. So I think this is an issue that you need to be talking about and encouraging our district to make sure that we can retain the highest quality teachers who we have currently in our district. In addition to that, another issue that came up is, unfortunately, this past week at Glorieta, and I see this as a real important member issue, we had three classrooms that partially flooded. Fans were brought in on Monday. Stuart House was available that day on site to see what was going on. What was concerning to me is we've had intense rains for a long period of time. Our ground is saturated. The situation in front of these rooms, it's at Glorieta, rooms five, six, and seven. I am in room seven. It's pretty flat, and so it doesn't take much for water to come to the rooms. In the 13 years I've been at Glorieta, my rooms flooded four times. So we've known about this issue since I've been here in the district, and even before then. One of the responses that I received was that they should have been sandbagged. I'm really not hired to do sandbagging, I'm sorry. I didn't even know where the sandbags were. I probably would have done it, because I'm that kind of person. It's my expectation that the district know their facilities. We only have five schools, and it's not a lot of schools to keep track of. So I erred on the side of, you know, assume positive intent. Fans were brought in Monday. They were turned on, they're really loud, it was very hard to provide instruction to our students with loud fans. At 3:10, when teachers left at the end of the day, the fans were turned off. The custodian didn't want to forget to turn them off, because they could trip the alarm. So no fans were running when there were three rooms that were pretty saturated. The electricity's off, no heat was on those nights. And what happened was, is in a closed room, there was some evaporation, and it started to make all of the paper, the books, start to curl. Two of the rooms smell really, really bad, and I'm very concerned that we have a health issue. I mentioned on Friday when Cara came, actually Cara and Jen Woodman came down to assess the situation, and they were surprised, they had not heard of this happening. I told them that I don't understand why we don't have heat on at night, and those special blowers on at night to make sure that we don't have a health issue. They agreed with me, and by the time they left, I got word that they were going to turn the alarm off, they were going to have the heat on all weekend and have the blowers running. It did significantly dry things out, but what happened is, in two of our rooms, it was too late. And in two rooms, it smells really, really bad. I can smell mold. I hope there isn't any kind of dangerous mold in those rooms, but I encourage the district to treat this as an emergency. Where I have a condominium, water is an emergency. They can immediately access your unit. They come in, they make sure all leaks are taken care of, and they remediate. I urge you to make sure that these rooms have professionals in them to take a look at them and deal with them. We know about this. This has happened at Glorieta many, many times, like I said before. I expect to see people in there testing the air. I expect to see my district knowing what's going on, because until Cara came on Friday, and Jen, the only other person that knew about it, was Stuart in his doubt. This needs to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Report from CSCA.
Steve Orderman, CSCA president. Hello, everybody. I'd just like to say, we're working towards the negotiations. We're getting everything in line, and hope it's all running smoothly on your end as I was surprised that we didn't hear more about the swastikas on the bus situation. This has come as a shock to me, and I would like to know more about it. If someone can send us a report, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Report from our superintendent.
Well, I actually have three directors who would like to make reports, so I'd like to defer my comments, because I have several later in the meeting, as they relate to agendaized items. I'd like to first ask Stuart House to make a report, and it actually has to do with the bus situation, which we were just made aware of today. Mr. House?
Honorable Board, Superintendent Seaton. You should know that Superintendent Seaton asked me to investigate You should know that Superintendent Seaton asked me to investigate this situation. We first received information today about bus number 15 at Glorietta, on the Glorietta route, which reportedly had swastikas and graffiti on the seats throughout the bus, and it had been there unremoved for weeks. That was the first report we got. We immediately contacted First Student Bus Company. They're Henry Cooper, who is their program manager, who went to investigate the presence of the swastika graffiti. Mr. Cooper reported back within the hour that he personally had checked every seat and surface on the bus and questioned bus driver Angelica. There was no evidence of swastikas on the seats or anywhere else. Angelica reported that a little over a week ago, an older elementary student had found a small swastika drawn in the condensation at the corner of a window near the front of the bus. The student immediately reported it to the driver. The driver, as a matter of fact, did not report it to the school district or her superiors. One older student was trying to explain what the swastika meant to the younger student, and we heard a little about that on the bus. The bus driver got up from her seat, erased the swastika on the window with her hand, and told the students they should only discuss this with their parents. I went to Glorietta this afternoon, questioned the driver myself, carefully inspected the bus from front to back, checking every seat. There was no sign of graffiti or swastikas. I spoke with a student who had discovered the swastika, and she said the incident occurred a little over a week ago. She said this was the second time in about two weeks it appeared on the glass window. We also spoke with Julia Hansen, the program manager of La Merenda School Bus Program, and again with Henry Cooper, a first student. They both stated they have zero tolerance of any hate symbols or graffiti on school buses, including anything racial, ethnic, homophobic, anti-Semitic, or obscene. We asked that the district be immediately informed if any such incidents happen in future. They agreed to inform us right away. I spoke with a concerned parent who was here earlier and spoke, who had also made inquiries with the bus driver and inspected the bus. The parent said that a student had told his parents over the weekend about the swastika incident, which prompted a number of parents in the district to share their concerns with board members. She said that the district should be proactive and affirm the district's disapproval of hate symbols and intolerant behavior at the schools, particularly, quote, "during these times." The bus conducts two pickups, the first at Glorietta and the second later at OIS. It is probable that the swastika was drawn the evening before at OIS and discovered the next day at Glorietta. OIS principal Michael Randall checked buses later today when they arrived at his school, but did not report any finding any, is that correct?
Correct.
Did not report finding any hate symbol graffiti. First student has asked all drivers from now on to carefully inspect their buses to determine if any hate symbols drawn anywhere inside, are drawn anywhere inside, and to immediately report it to their supervisor and in turn to the district.
Thank you, Mr. House. For our next director report, I'd like to ask, Ms. Sidrian, can you please give us your just brief enrollment update?
Good evening. The elementary school sites have their early enrollment for TKK registration, and this is our first attempt to look at how many students would be coming into the district. This is one of the harder numbers to project, because we don't have any information to go by other than if we provide an early enrollment period, it can help us with our staffing moving forward. But as of the end of registration, we had 40 TK students registered about this time last year. We had 43, so that sounds about right. Currently, we have 50 TK students enrolled with the district. So between now and the beginning of school, if we were to receive another seven students, we'd be on the same course as what we are currently this year. And for kinder, we have registered 178 kinder students. Last time about this year was 192, so we are slightly a little less, about 14 students. And overall, right now at Arinda, we have 261 kinders. So we're on track. It is an early attempt to get some of the numbers in, and I'm happy to report that it was a success, and we'll continue registration on the first week of March for all grade levels, including any late registration for TK and K. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sidrian. And Ms. Marshall, we've had a number of events throughout the district, some of which were alluded to earlier tonight, but I'd love for you to kind of recap from your perspective some of the great things happening across our district.
I will. Thank you very much. You know, I'm sitting here directly across from our mission statement, and as I look at that and I hear the comments tonight, and I think about all that's gone on in the past month, I just wanted to take a few moments to acknowledge how our schools have opened the doors to families, to students, to teachers, working in partnership with the community to provide events that involve everyone at the school site beyond the regular school day. It's been quite extraordinary. Just in the past month, we've had at both Wagner and Sleepy Hollow math nights, where students at Sleepy Hollow were leading parents and teachers were leading parents at Wagner Ranch. The diverse abilities that you heard about earlier at Glorietta also took place at OIS this week, with an evening on Wednesday, with the community also actively involved to really help our students understand our challenges as human beings, but also the joys that we bring because of our differences to our community. Also, last month, we had administrators come from other districts to tour Delray School and walk through for two days to learn about our reading and writing project and what we're doing, and to take copious notes and to take back to learn from us. And so it's quite extraordinary. As we move forward, I do want to remind the board that we have very important Kid Power trainings coming up on February 28th and March 1st. This is the second in a series, and what we are doing is parents and students working together to really know how to set boundaries, address and respond to hate-related behavior and bullying and cyberbullying. And this is a community-wide effort. On the heels of following the parent-student workshops at each school site, on March 6th, all of our teachers are going through their second level of training at the elementary level in the morning. And then in the afternoon, we are training our classified staff in the same skills and strategies to help our kids to continue to feel safe and to have a toolkit to know how to be safe. In addition, at OIS, they embarked on cultural proficiency, education, and awareness this entire year, really looking at... All of us are looking at what biases we have and how do we remove that? How are we being inclusive? And do we know if we really are being inclusive? It's very empowering, and how are we translating that into our curriculum? We had a child safety committee meet last year to look at how we could revive our Think First program and speak up, be safe, and Kid Power is a big component of that. But more importantly, the Child Safety Committee is reconvening this coming month to really explore what more we can do. And so with that, I will also just add that our history social science focus group that Charles referred to is in its third year. It started small. It really is growing, and that's what we wanted it to do. It's really to look at how are we being inclusive of all groups in our instruction and in our classroom? How can we develop our curriculum to address those that have made major contributions in our history to bring us where we are today from all groups? And that includes classes, ethnic, gender, all of it. Really looking at also the legislation of SB 48. That's facilitated with us by the director of the UC Berkeley History Social Science Project. So we're busy, but we feel it's good work, and it's at the core of everything we do. We want our students to feel safe, so they can be focused on doing their absolute best in our classrooms.
Thank you so much, Ms. Marshall. That concludes our reports.
Thank you. Let's transfer to the board report. Dr. Cara.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank our staff. This afternoon, this morning, when we found out about the swastikas on the bus, they were extremely responsive. They acted in an expeditious way to really investigate and understand what had happened, why we didn't know about it, what was really going on. And I want to thank them for diverting from all the other things they had to do today to get ready for this meeting, to really take that and find out what was happening right away, so that we would know. It's been busy this month, as Charles alluded to. We had disability awareness at Glorietta, which was wonderful, and if anyone has the opportunity at either Glorietta or OIS or our schools in the future, I highly recommend. It's inspiring to all. I enjoyed going with Hillary to the Masters in Governance seminar that we have undertaken. It's a seminar of five weekend classes that are all day on different topics, so that we can eat better board numbers. And we studied about the Local Control Accountability Plan and policymaking this past Saturday, and we have another one coming up in two weeks. And I have been involved in our legislative team as the budget comes down from our governor and the news is less than ideal. It's really important that we all get involved, to the extent we have the ability to, in affecting the legislation that funds our schools. And I know that there... I will be going to Sacramento with some of my fellow board members in March to lobby on behalf of our school funding to our legislators, and there will be a meeting, March 24th, I believe, at the San Ramon office. I can get you the information. Sponsored by the California, or the local PTA Association, but our parents' clubs also participate as feeder schools to the Okalani's District. And that will be a way for us to hear from our legislators and to have an impact into what we might be able to do to affect our legislation. And if anyone is interested, please email me, and I'll share all that information with you. And I also have had wonderful meetings with parents on different topics, and I welcome your input and thoughts, so that we can all work together to continue to improve our districts. Thank you.
So Sleepy Hollow, I had a couple of opportunities to go to the site this past month. I tagged along with Dr. Seaton on a site visit, which I really highly encourage all of you to try to tag along with her, because it's nice. It's just the two of you, and Dr. Gallegos was with us. And it was a nice opportunity to get into the classrooms and to see what the kids were working on and doing, in a little bit of a less structured format. It was very nice. And then I got, had the opportunity to go to the very successful family math night on a rainy... It was rescheduled from another rainy night to... Like the last rainy night. With a big sinkhole. But it was incredibly successful. They had about 250 people there, I would say. I mean, the kids were extremely engaged in all the activities. It was really a really nice event and very well done, so kudos to you guys for running that and pulling that off. And it was really nice to see. I'm looking forward to attending more events in the future.
So I'd also like to echo what Cara said before. We were at the district office earlier today when we first heard the news about these swastikas on the bus and saw firsthand how Dr. Seaton and Stuart House immediately undertook investigation and really working towards resolving the issue as expediently as possible and really getting to the bottom of it. So thank you, girls, for doing that. And as Cara mentioned, we have started the CSBA Masters in Governance program and had our first one, and we'll continue to do those, so I'm looking forward to that opportunity, and thank you for giving me that opportunity. And then I am the board member at Wagner Ranch, and I had the opportunity to meet with Principal Manheim this morning and talk with him about issues facing Wagner Ranch. And then also, he took the time to walk me around the campus and introduce me to some of the teachers. Always a wonderful opportunity to be able to go onsite and see education in process. So thank you for that. And as well, I had the opportunity with Amy Stuckey back there to attend the parent club meetings on a monthly basis, and really appreciate the warm welcome.
Well, I echo Cara's theory about the fast response, once we did hear about that awfulness. So we've held workshops. We've been busy as a board. In addition to that, I've been working with Jason and with some of the members of Friends of the Wagner Ranch Nature Area on beginning to actually move the vision forward for the nature area, and that's something that's personally very dear and exciting to me. So that's the bulk of what I've been doing. But I would like to say that I'm the representative for OIS, and I did have a meeting with Michael Mandel and Josh DeFeo and Stacy, and I can't tell you how impressed and glad I was for the time that we spent together. And, you know, I asked them one question, and the answer made me feel so grateful for all of them. They were talking about getting students to calm down and all that, and I said, "Well, how do you do that?" And they said, "We get to know each student really personally." And went on and convinced me that that's actually very true. And with the number of students they have and how crazy that transition must be from grammar school to middle school, it verified my son's experience of going from grammar to middle school, which was not boding well, to say the least, and actually went very well. So I'm very grateful for everybody there at OIS, and thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Cara. Well, the thing about going last is most of the things you have to say. Charles told you a little bit about our meeting, and I'm looking forward to having the dialogue with our teachers and making sure we're staying in constant communication with all staff. I wasn't able to go to the Nature Area Boards meeting this week. I had it on the wrong week, and then the week it happened, I couldn't. We'll be talking about the Nature Area resolution a little later. I'm looking forward to going to Delray for Kid Power presentation on the 28th, and I think a parent club meeting if they hold it with it, and also seeing some of the plans for our Gen 7 construction there. Carol said it, we've been having a lot of board workshops. Those are workshops we're having as a board on focus topics. We've had one on governance. We've had one on the budget. We're going to have one on facilities. And just so the public knows, you don't have to come to all of those. You're welcome to them. They aren't one-time meetings. We come up with a list of things we learn and want to do, and we're all following up on them, as I think you're hearing from our reports. So we have a lot on our agenda, and I couldn't be prouder of the board here for taking all the time to pursue it. I also want to shout out to OIS, because I have a son there, and what Carol said is so true. The kids there are known as individuals, and it's a joy to have them come home and talk about the disability awareness program and other things that happen there. It sinks in, and it really makes a difference. Final thing I'll say is, we've resolved, is one of our governance goals, to have these meetings as streamlined as possible. They are full, so I can't promise you an early adjournment tonight, but you're going to watch me try to really keep on schedule for each item, and try to think through the appropriate time for each. And so bear with me. We're going to try. Our first two items will be the longest, but then we're going to keep, try to stay on a schedule. So, there we go. So, enough talking from the board. We will move to our first action item, General Waiver Renewal Application for Equity Length of Time and Public Hearing for Transitional Kindergarten. Kathy.
Okay, so it's been two years, two years since we applied for a waiver when we were embarking on an extended day kindergarten program. And the waiver is a state waiver to allow transitional kindergarten to attend school at, for different minutes than the students that are in kindergarten. So, when we applied for the waiver two years ago, we received it for two years, and that is consistent with any other district in California. And so, we're up for renewal for the 2017 school year and the year following. So, you have before you, in your packet, a draft of what the online waiver might look like, which outlines why we are applying for the equity length of time of minutes is the ed code that we are asking to waive. And as part of that process, we need to get, make sure that our site councils at our elementary schools and our union representatives all agree to move forward with the waiver as well. In addition, prior to submitting it, we need to have a public hearing, which we have scheduled for tonight. We also need to make sure that public hearing was properly noticed, and it is according to the waiver requirements. So, I present this to you for action tonight, following a public hearing.
Kathy. So, a public hearing means that the public gets to say something, if they'd like to, about this topic. Do you have any public comment? Oh, yeah, let me, I should open the hearing to accept the comment.
Charles Shadaway, President. Kathy Marshall approached me and said it was important for her to get the input of OEA members. So, we, at our Rep Council and Exec Board Meeting, brought this issue up. It was really important to us. We also emailed all of our TK teachers to make sure that they were able to, you know, weigh in on the importance of this. From all of that input, we heard that they do embrace this TK waiver, and we appreciate the opportunity that Kathy gave us to give our input. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public meeting. Hearing. Leading is stolen. Kathy.
This is on for action, for the board to approve the waiver renewal for the next two years.
And we approve the waiver renewal for the next two years.
I'll second that. All in favor? Or do we need a roll call vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye to oppose? Passes the unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Record. We said before, we're changing the order of our agenda. We're going to move now to discussion items A and then B. A, just to hear about the draft of our strategic plan. Now, Superintendent.
I am thrilled to be able to share with the board and those here in the audience the draft of our OUS strategic plan. As a new superintendent, it was really important for me to have us undergo this process so I would understand, as a whole school community, what our clear vision was for what we wanted for our students here in Arinda. This process helps us to understand where we've been, where we are, and where we want to go. It sets our direction and helps us prioritize. So, US Board Members, me, Superintendent, our directors, our teachers, our principals, all stakeholders in the district. And it's just thrilling for me to see so many members of the Strategic Plan Corporation here in the audience tonight. I thank you for being here. We'd like to begin with Tanuka Roy Gordon. Tanuka is a parent of Glorieta, and we roped her in early. She was a kindergartner as her eldest child. So, we spared no time pulling Tanuka in. And honestly, I didn't know Tanuka, but prior to this process, Ron Langer just said, "Hey, I think I have a great community member for you." In addition to being a parent of a Glorieta kindergarten student, Tanuka happens to also be an expert in the area of design thinking and works professionally with a number of corporations on how they message what they believe in and where it is they want to go. And so, she was instrumental in this process, as was everyone on our team. So, Tanuka, I'm honored to have you start us off.
Thank you.
We can try it, or you can just say, "I can be your vanna." You want to try the right, we can give it a shot. And if not, you can just say, "Next slide," and we'll make it work either way.
Okay, awesome. It might be a little, a lot of reanimation, so. So, just as Carolyn said, really, you know, just a quick overview of the strategic planning process. We were set out, Barbara was, you know, set out to go through this process to help us ensure we're aligned on guiding philosophies, priorities, and rules, aligning all our stakeholders on a shared vision, and making sure that we have a strategic planning process that provides a framework for, to ensure the work of the school system is data-driven so we can make the right priorities. And really, there's
Hold it up just a tad.
Just go scroll up.
Yep. There you go.
Ah, got it, okay. So, there's two phases, the what and the how. And the what really guided the directions and priorities, and that included things like the vision statement and guiding principles, strategic directions and student statements. And then there's Phase Two, which is the how, and we haven't yet gotten to that, but that's the implementation component, and some examples included. Get the hang of this soon.
It's okay.
Okay.
I have your back.
Okay, awesome. So, as I said, so our first order of item was to really focus on the strategic directions and student statements. But then, we also met as a team to talk about the vision statement and guiding principles. And really, the vision statement and guiding principles were to articulate more of a desired future state. And that would be kind of an uber view of all of our strategic directions, but we wanted to make sure that it would be inspirational and easy to digest. So, the process that really we took was to go through a feedback cycle. So, Barbara and team had posed a question to the community to get feedback on what are the attributes that, you know, make students successful and will continue to make kids successful at Arinda schools. And so, we used that as an initial question and then obtained feedback, synthesized that feedback, and refined that proposal. And it was kind of this cycle ongoing that we took throughout the entire process. Yep. And really, what it took was going through a funnel that started pretty broad and then narrowing down. So, how do you take something that's so abstract and really words from different community members that were on white papers, and then taking that and distilling it down to a vision statement? So, we took the community feedback on posters. Then as a strategic committee meeting, a strategic committee, we came up with five proposed drafts of strategic directions. We then synthesized that to a single proposal with a smaller subcommittee. Then we met back as a larger group again and refined that committee with feedback and created a draft proposal. Then that was submitted back out to the community, and we got constituency feedback on our proposal. And then, a small committee met again to refine and synthesize, and then we met as a larger group again to finalize what the strategic direction would look like. And really, the output of that is what you're going to hear from soon in terms of what were the key, you know, points. But we came up with four key strategic directions and then student will statements underneath each of those strategic directions. So, then came the process of the vision statement and the guiding principles. And this was really a shared committee collaboration process as well. And what we did here was really kind of a subcommittee. We took, developed a model for the guiding principles. And during our third subcommittee meeting, we did this shared vision collaboration exercise, which I'll cover shortly. And then, we finally, as a subcommittee, finalized the vision statement and guiding principles. So, the model that we used for our guiding principles was that they need to guide all our strategic directions and that they should be easily digestible by the community while still being meaningful. So, we didn't want it to be so text-heavy that no one would really be able to understand what it meant. And so, we looked at a few best practices of other standards, and one that resonated was IDEO, a design consulting firm. And looking at their culture code, their little book of values kind of stood out to us. So, for our school district, the model that we liked was to use a quote from someone inspirational, someone famous, that could be inspirational to the audience, that would emphasize a point, and then that would be a teaching tool. So, as an example, one quote could be, "Be the change you wish to see in the world," by Gandhi. And then, what are sort of the key tenets that we want to emphasize? So, being conscientious global citizens, being kind, being inclusive, and making, you know, positive difference. Those were key themes that emerged from our committee meeting. And then, this shared vision collaboration exercise, this is where we got to become a little creative, and we imagined a newspaper headline for Arinda School District five years into the future. So, the exercise was to go through and identify what are some key accomplishments and cover story feature that you would want for Arinda schools. And we had a working session, so you could see it was really collaborative. And then we, you know, had posters and papers, and I think the committee got really into this exercise. And the output of it was really kind of five kind of main posters of newspaper headlines that we could use. And there were, again, key patterns that emerged from these newspaper headlines. And it's always kind of interesting how that happens. But a lot of the patterns were that Arinda schools really believe in crossing barriers and believing in service and community service and being inclusive. Those were some of the key themes, again, that emerged out of, you know, our working session together, as well as academic excellence. So, once we got all of that, we wanted to kind of have a visualization of what that could look like. So, we took, you know, just as a sample model, looking at infographic examples. But then, just, you know, the poster on the right is just a kind of a sample of what it could look like, where we have a key vision statement and then quotes with some, you know, some of those key words standing out for each block. So, Barbara, Carolyn, and the rest of the committee members will walk through those more in detail. But, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sue Boudreaux from Arinda Intermediate School, science teacher. And the strategic direction is inspire innovators and problem solvers.
Hi, I'm Riley Moran. I'm a senior at Marmont High School, and I was part of this. So, for the first strategic direction, students will learn how to approach problems creatively, responsibly, and effectively. Develop the courage and confidence to seek challenges and take purposeful risks. Explore opportunities that spark curiosity, inquiry, and discovery. Embrace successes and failures as opportunities to learn.
Hi, Katie Holman. I teach fourth grade at Delray. Our second strategic direction is create resourceful collaborators and critical thinkers.
Hi, I'm Alex Meckus, an eighth grader at OAS. And so, under the second strategic directions, students will develop effective oral, written, digital, and interpersonal communication skills. Understand how to use technology and discern good information in a safe, responsible, and effective manner. They will acquire and integrate essential knowledge and skills across all disciplines and demonstrate intellectual curiosity and perseverance.
I'm Amy Steffman, Parents Club President, Wygen Ranch, and parent of two kids that have sat very well for the past year. Our third principle is cultivate ethical and respectful citizens.
Under the strategic direction, students will understand the importance of the changing environment and natural world as stewards of the earth. Contribute as engaged citizens to local, national, and global communities. Value diversity and inclusion. And respect differences in learning styles, talents, and abilities of all people.
Hi, I'm Dale Okamitsu, first grade teacher at Wygen Ranch. And our fourth strategic direction is nurture emotional, social, and physical well-being.
Under this strategic direction, students will develop mindfulness and self-awareness. Build self-confidence and resilience. Understand and learn to advocate for their intellectual, physical, social, and emotional needs. Feel a sense of belonging, connection, and inclusion. And confidently interact with their world with empathy, joy, and a sense of fulfillment.
That was an earlier draft, there's minor changes, which you're getting a copy being sent around.
No problem.
Okay. The working, Barbara Young. We had the privilege of facilitating this work. And the piece that we're going to go back to right now are the guiding principles. And this was added to your strategic, can you, yeah, there they are. The graphic that Tanuka was referring to was to take the keywords and make that a visual piece, but it came from this piece, which is in the black bullets underneath, and we built quotes around them. Are to prepare our students to adapt and excel in an ever-changing world by cultivating higher-order thinking skills within and across all disciplines from the arts and sciences.
Jim Mann, I'm a principal, Wygen Ranch. Be the change you wish to see in the world, by Gandhi. Develop conscientious global citizens who are kind individuals and who are inspired to make a positive difference in the world.
The next is the most difficult thing is the decision to act. The rest is merely tenacity. Amelia Earhart. Foster a culture where students boldly embrace challenges and believe they can fulfill their highest potential even if they aren't there yet.
Is the supreme art of the teacher to awaken joy in creative expression and knowledge. Albert Einstein. Cultivate the creative mind, foster authentic learning experiences, encourage students to pursue their passions, and develop joy in learning.
And the last is, it's vital that when educating our children's brains, we do not neglect to educate their hearts. The Dalai Lama. Nurture the whole child is the 21st century imperative with an intent to focus on emotional, social, and physical well-being and connectiveness.
And, you know, the quotes were really used, actually Carolyn actually was part of this early on. And some of the staff you'll meet that were part of the committee said, "You know, I can use this teaching, I can use it, apply it." So, we've been talking about lessons that could be done at all grade levels around this. The, the bench piece that Tanuka was showing, and you have a look at this, is that this would become an infographic that could be put in classrooms so that students, teachers would have access. There would be an easy way for students to be able to use the information around each of these quotes that refer to the strategic plan and the, and the guiding principles. And luckily, I have a friend who's a graphic designer who is volunteering, twisted his arm, is a volunteer to do the design for us. We'll hope that still is true when I go to meet with them. But, so, Carolyn, do you want to share the committee piece of this? I would love to. And if you're here tonight, because I see so many in the audience.
So many of them.
I know, I'm really impressed. So, and I can make that just a tad bigger. We had a committee comprised of all stakeholders across the district, and these are amazing individuals. I just feel so fortunate in my nine months, I think it's been with, that I've been with the district, to have already gotten to know so many incredibly capable and passionate people who support our schools across this community. And so, I'd just like to read their names quickly and how
And so, I'd just like to read their names quickly, and how, what stakeholder group they represent. Laura Andrews, EFO treasurer.
Can they stand up for us?
If they're here, they can stand up or wave. Sue Boudreau, OAS teacher, science. Michelle Broack, Delray, school secretary. Carol Brown, board vice president. Delray, parent club co-president. Chip Ferguson, Sleepy Hollow, parent club co-president. Bobby Glasser, OEA representative, OAS teacher, F Corps. Tanuka Gordon, community member, also Glorieta parent. Jessica Greer, Sleepy Hollow, teacher, grade kinder. Vivian Heen, OIS, California School Employees Association representative, and she is an instructional aide. Megan Hollister, EFO, vice president, campaign for K-5.
And Wagoner and OAS parents.
Vanessa Imber, Glorieta parent. And Debbie Jamison, district office personnel technician. Therese Long, OEA representative, Delray teacher, grade 5. Jim Manheimer, Wagon Ranch principal. Raymond Mar, district office director of technology. Kathy Marshall, district office director of curriculum and instruction. Alice Meckus, OIS student. Erin Miller, Glorieta teacher, 1st grade. Riley Moran, Miramani High School student. Lexi Morrissey, OIS parent club co-president. Leslie Darwin O'Brien, community member. Dale Okamitsu, Wagon Ranch teacher, 1st grade. Julie Parks, Miramani High School principal. Katie Pullman, Delray teacher, 4th grade. Michael Randall, OIS principal. Julie Rossiter, board past president. And of course, I was on this committee. Shawna Simmons, EFO co-president. Amy Stufman, Wagon Ranch parent co-president. Patsy Templeton, district technology coach. And Jen Woodman, district office director of human resources and special services. I just, you know, and I just want to say, while everyone on that committee was amazing, the two most valuable members, in my mind, were our two students. And I'm sorry, I love the rest of you, but Riley and Alex, I didn't even know Alex, I knew Riley a little bit before this process. They brought such depth to our discussions, and I think some of the members of the committee even said, maybe the rest of us don't even need to be here, they can just do this. They're so bright, so incredible. If you think about being 14 or 18, and being a part of this group of so many adults, and yet they were communicating, they were some of the leaders of their subgroups, they were involved from the get-go, and just so articulate, so poised, beyond anything any of us could have imagined doing at their age. And so I'm, while I'm appreciative to everyone for the amount of time and effort put into this entire process, I'm particularly just grateful to both Riley and Alex, and their parents, and their principals, for letting us borrow them on school days. They didn't seem to mind missing class.
We did, we did give them back for exams. You know, I would like to just, as the facilitator, say, it was a phenomenal, I think we had a phenomenal group of people to work with. I mean, it was hard work. I mean, there was, there was struggle over every single word that went into this strategic plan, right? And, and to just talk about, you know, it's been a pleasure to learn so much from Tanuka in these final stages of the strategic plan, so thank you, Tanuka. I would just say also, when I was meeting with the subgroup, and Alex unfortunately had to take a test at school, one of the people on the committee said, he's in middle school? It was like they were shocked, because you're so, you both, you both have just offered, and Riley's headed into teaching career, and hoping hope in the future. So, thank you all very much for all the contribution. And to the board, you know, you're, you're basically, you're, right now, it's beyond basics, beyond barriers, easy to say.
I have the infographic out.
So that's your future vision, very simple, and your mission is all of the components of the quotes and the words that we pulled together. So, okay? So that, it's turned back over to you, Mr. Mann. Okay?
Thank you. Amazing. So I think that the committee has, after all that work, now brought it forward, discussion with the board. We'll discuss and probably have all sorts of questions. I'd like to ask Herb, could you explain to us, or the relationship between the guiding principles that are laid out here and the strategic directions? Tanuka, you touched on that, but how those will roll out and guide things?
So, the committee really started, it's like working backwards, backwards planning. So we started by, as we said, using all of the information from the community and built the guiding principles and the student will statements. So this is what we want, students will have the opportunity to do the following. Then we worked backwards into the guiding principles. So if you think about it, it's sort of like a level. It's beyond basics, beyond barriers, and then it's the guiding principles, we're using quotes to strengthen those, and then underneath that are the strategic directions and the student will statements. This is, remember what Tanuka said, this is only the what part of it, the how, the implementation is how that's going to be done. So Carolyn would pull together a team in the summer that would start building a detailed implementation plan that would say, you know, we want to do this in this timeframe, who's going to do it, when do we report back to the board, how is that measured, on each pieces of it. There also could be pieces that go into a technology plan that would involve community members, et cetera. Or it could be pieces that go into the facilities plan.
LCAP.
LCAP, all of that. But the big piece of it, the next big step, this is only the first step, the next big step is the implementation. What does it look like, and what are you doing with that, with the big guiding pieces of it? Does that make sense? Is that better?
No, it does. But I wanted to understand particularly how, I understand the relationship, the guiding principles drove the strategic directions, do they, but they don't necessarily align piece by piece with each of the strategic direction statements?
When we were working on the strategic directions and the student will statements, we felt that there were overarching pieces that were above them. So for instance, the arts were a piece of them, Kara contacted me, the arts were above them. Students working, you know, strong basic education, the basics, you know, strong academic piece, that was an overarching piece. Another overarching piece was, pardon? Growth mindset. You know, we thought there were big pieces that looked over the whole thing, that ended up in this bigger piece up here. Because it wasn't just students' will, we wanted, you know, the global piece of it. Okay?
That's great. I'll turn to the board for any questions.
First of all, I would love to thank the group for the amazing amount of work and thought that you put into this process. It's truly incredible, and it's something when I was campaigning, we all talked about a strategic plan, and this is such a wonderful start for us moving forward. I did contact Barbara earlier about the arts and music, because as EFO president, I feel like I fought for them in our district for years, and I'm not willing to see them go away. And I would love to see a strategic statement regarding creativity in the arts and music, because I feel like the strategic statements are going to be where we say, well, we don't have enough dollars to do everything, so let's look at what we said we would do, and make sure we're funding those things. And I just would be very sad if our district lost sight of the need to continue to fund art and music. And so I just would like to put that out in respectful consideration for the group, because it did seem like there was a lack of just genuine passion and creativity in the strategic statements, and that was just something that struck me. And it's only my opinion, and I totally defer to the expertise of the group, but I wanted to raise that question. Thank you.
I hear what you're saying, and I think, you know, what Barbara was saying is right. I mean, we felt as a group when we were meeting that the arts were so important that we picked up on some. Above the specifics of the strategic directions and into the guiding principles, to say that that's sort of an overarching item for us of the district, so.
And I think, to go back at that, in the implementation plan, the specific, something much more specific would be, let's say, there was an interest in building the music program, or that would be specifically in the implementation.
Do you agree with what I just said? Yeah, I think that was the point where these items, which is why Jason, you're saying that they don't align case by case with each strategic direction, because we were more of like those overarching principles that we were trying to, things that just sort of applied to everything.
Yeah, I totally agree. And, you know, I remember when I first, when Ann and Barbara said, the question is, what do you want students to be, what do you want for the students? And I go, how's that a strategic plan? I want to know about facilities, and, you know, stuff like that. And she said, well, we're here for the students first. And what you want for the students should drive every single decision that you make as a board. So, if we need better facilities, how does that make the students learn all these things? And I really appreciated that, because I was being more like, God forbid, engineer, because I'm not like an engineer. I was thinking that way, and I realized it wasn't nearly as open and fluid as it ought to be.
And that would be part of the implementation, right? So that's like that next step, the level, okay, well, you know, how do, you know, how do our facilities impact what we want the students to learn, how can we improve the facilities to exactly, to need these directions?
I hear what you're saying, but I actually agree with Kara. I'm so, just think, I understand that, you know, that's an overarching idea, the arts, that sort of thing, but there's, there's a lot of specifics in the strategic directions, or solving problems, technology, and that kind of thing, that maybe just another bullet point emphasizing creativity outside of creative thinking, and I would like to see that.
And then a place for that might be, under the creative resource and collaborators and critical thinkers, acquire and integrate essential knowledge and skills across all disciplines. It might have been a direction they were touching on, and it might be a place to elaborate all disciplines.
Right, but the discipline sounds more curricular based.
I know. Maybe there's a broader way to say that, so it's not just, yeah, exactly. Good thought. I wanted to thank you also, this is just wonderful exercise, and I wanted to thank you especially for cultivating ethical and respectful citizens, for two reasons. One, I hadn't expected to say tonight, but you know, after the way we started our meeting, you know, what could be more appropriate than this as part of our strategic statement? Value diversity and inclusion is there. And what I did expect to say tonight is, you know, I think that's probably the central challenge of our time, right? Given all that's going around us, teaching students that this democracy works, and it works if people engage. So I love the engaging the citizens of the local, national, and global communities. I love valuing diversity and inclusion. One thing I'd like to suggest that I think could flesh out a little more is, the statement talks about ethical and respectful, and I think this is addressing respectful. Ethical's a really tough one, and I think that ethical means students being able to articulate a point of view, defend it, but also accept they may be wrong. If everyone in this country did that, things would be working, and I think we have to teach that at a really early age. The balance between having an opinion, because we all have one, and understanding it might be right or wrong, and engaging. So I just felt like, maybe in the value diversity and inclusion, or maybe in one of the other points, this encouragement of developing that point of view, in a respectful but also sort of conscientious way, might be helpful, because I think that's, that's what lays the foundation for ethical. And then I also, like you had shared with Barbara, I've just gotten involved in an American Bar Association committee that is trying to look at best practices for civic education and the schools, and there's some wonderful documents and studies already out there. And I shared one of them, which I'd love to just share with the committee. And I think there's schools developing best practices for the curriculum of civic education, and that's the other aspect, for me, has been just a really important priority. I would love us to teach government in exciting new ways, the way it can be taught, and I think it's just something that's fallen on the wayside in curriculum, given everything that's happened. So I offer that too. I don't, you know, you've gone through so much work, but I think you're looking for our feedback and touchstones.
That's why we're here, it's the draft.
You know, Jason, I think the place for your, pardon me, having an opinion and defending it, and understanding that it could be wrong, that's what I was thinking when we ended up with resourceful collaborators and critical thinkers. Because I think what we're not doing nationwide would lose a whole lot of critical thinking. And, so if we were to say something specifically about that, I think that's where it goes.
The other point that I liked about this, as we were developing it, I like that two of the four strategic directions are really focused on, you know, student well-being, and ethics, and things like that. And it's, you know, so it's a more balanced approach, I think, than what I was expecting it would come out of, if it'd be maybe a more academic approach, and not to say that academics is lost, but that, I liked that balance in the strategic directions. I know how much work went into all this from all the people involved, and so I'm hesitant to wordsmith it a lot.
I agree with you, I feel that hesitant to see myself. But I also feel that it's always hard when you're in the thick of a process sometimes to look at what you may have not, or thought was being clearly communicated, but maybe it wasn't as clearly communicated as you thought it was. So that's, I think, the spirit in which I'm offering thoughts, and I know Jason, and I think that's worth coming.
I get that, and then also, like, well, how much can we put into the implementation piece of that, or does it need to be, do you feel it's not necessarily just here? I mean, something that's supposed to be, you know, will be implemented in different ways as the years progress, so you just don't want it to be broad enough for us.
Yeah, we want it to be something that we actually use, that we look at and say, it really reflects all of these different aspects of what we're trying to accomplish in our school system, and so I hope that when we're making, if we have to in the future make our decisions, we will be looking at these documents as the guiding principles for us to make those decisions, and that's why I, it came to me that this was something that I wanted to share.
But that's part of why I like that it is balanced, like Julie said, in terms of academics, because that was something that really stood out to me when I was doing this, I really appreciate that, because that is really what makes, you know, a whole student being balanced.
The whole person.
The whole person.
Yeah.
Kara, how would you, not students, sorry. Kara, how would you feel about, re-read that third bullet point on the second strategic direction, acquire and integrate essential knowledge and skills across all academic and artistic disciplines? Might work?
I think, if I can suggest, you know, as I listen to you, I look out at the committee, we are not done yet. You know, my assumption going into tonight would be that we would listen to the board, I would call the committee back together after school one day, and for as many of us that can make it would come back, and we would address the questions we had tonight, or any, you know, things that were not needed to have clarity, and we would do that again, and bring it back for a final reading.
Well, that would be great.
That would be wonderful. So let's, in that spirit, we're going to, let's keep making some comments, we should have public comment, and some of the committee members might want to say a word or two, and I'm promising to keep us on schedule, so we're going to try to.
And I would just say, I mean, I've done enough of these now, and what I love is they're never the same, and they so reflect the community. And, you know, when we got to things with Sue and her team, and wherever it ended up, that beyond, beyond basics, because basics, when I interviewed this, you know, this whole community, you want a strong basic education. But I thought beyond basics, beyond barriers, really reflects, I think, so much about Arinda. So, you know, thank you. So I'll just take notes over here at that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Board will have a chance to comment some more, should we take some public comment?
They're all set, they're all part of the committee.
Like, don't change your work. Don't say it now, say it later.
Anyone who's not a committee member?
Travis, I know you're president. One of the things that always comes to mind is the unconscious bias we all have. When I was in Vallejo for 10 years, we had intensive... When I was in Vallejo for 10 years, we had intensive unconscious bias training. And I know a lot of districts are doing that right now, and I think it's really important for us. We don't realize the biases that we have that might be in some way having a negative impact on our students and on ourselves and our, and those that we work with. I was just trying to look through there and see where that would fit. Because I think that, and I think that's really important. I think sometimes, you know, we keep teaching, and those things come out, and we don't know that it's having that impact on our students. Thank you.
All right, back to the board. Any other comments we'd like to share about strategic? I think, I think the committee, you have your comments about arts. Except mine about ethical and respectful citizens. I think, given the context, this is, I just can't tell you how grateful I am for this being central to our, to our vision.
Thank you.
And for the committee, I'll send you an email about that.
Thank you.
And it was a really great process. I mean, it was a really meaningful experience. I think Barbara.
Barbara, you did a phenomenal job in keeping students at the center.
This is gonna be very lovely. Everybody still here has to move forward.
All right, we're shuffling around. Here are.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you today about block scheduling at OIS. The last time I presented information on block scheduling was in March of 2016. And since that time, we have a couple of new board members, including a new superintendent. So I felt it would be appropriate to give some information on the background and how we got to where we are today.
Sorry to jump in. There should be.
Clicker.
A clicker, yes. So we can try it, and I might have to manipulate it a little to get it to work. But we got it to work last time.
Okay, thank you.
It's the right arrow.
So this school year, we fully implemented a block schedule from the start of the school year. But this wasn't an idea that just came up overnight. Back in the 2013, 2014 school year, teachers started approaching me, asking if we would ever consider a block schedule at OIS. And the impetus was, for this was the Common Core standards. The depth of knowledge and the rigor required to properly address the standards required more than the standard 45-minute periods in several of our classes. Science and mathematics in particular. That by the time teachers had the opportunity to lay out the plan for the day, and then on the back end have opportunities for discussion and cleanup, the 45-minute period just left too little time for the students to truly actively engage in the activities. So as I was presented with that question, we presented the thought to our instructional council, which consists of all of our department chair people. And the simple question was, is this worth exploring further? And the answer was yes. And so we spent, quite frankly, two years taking a look at various schedules that other schools use. We made a visit to Piedmont. They were the only school at the time that was fully implementing a block schedule during that school year. And we took a group of teachers there so that they could ask questions and observe the schedule in action. We had other shareholder discussions with parents, teachers, students. We presented the thought and the idea to the site council, OEA. Ultimately, we developed an MOU, a memorandum of understanding for, for the block schedule for this year and the pilot that we did earlier that I'll talk about. And that MOU established an advisory committee, which we'll be meeting later this month to talk about the current schedule and how it's working and discussing the adjustments that need to be made. Presentations were made to the school board, parent groups, and ultimately, we informed students. And in December of 2015, we did a one-week pilot of the block schedule. I'm sorry, two weeks, my bad. Two-week pilot of the block schedule. We surveyed the students and teachers. We provided the feedback and results to various stakeholder groups like the ones I mentioned earlier. Did I just give a slide?
Do you want me to scroll back?
Can you? Oh, okay, maybe I'm on track. We're good. I thought I.
Process or the next one?
Next one.
Okay, pro.
And one more.
Okay.
Perfect. So throughout this process, we identified goals of the block schedule, which included, as I mentioned, opportunities to really address the depth of knowledge required by the Common Core standards. It presented opportunities for fewer student contacts per day. It allowed for time for teachers to actually conference with students during the course of the period. It presented a slower pace, not only for the day, but potentially of the classroom. And it gave opportunities to increase engagement of students. Block scheduling is considered to be a research-based best practice. Many schools are looking at block scheduling as an effective way to implement the Common Core standards. It presents infinite opportunities for project-based learning, which again, is another research-based best practice for working with students. For some, it gave the perception of less homework. School homework wasn't necessarily immediately due the very next day, but students having more days between when the homework was due. For some, it gave the impression that they had less homework. And for some, some teachers, they actually chose to assign less homework because they had opportunities to do things in the classroom that they normally would have assigned for homework. It provided for truer, fewer transitions throughout the course of the day and potentially reduce stress of students and teachers. Block scheduling is a component of our current site plan. It, as I mentioned, supports the Common Core, and as I also mentioned, it's the direction of education right now. Many school districts have either already adopted or are seriously considering adopting block schedules. The first five of those actually, the first four have already implemented a block schedule. JM and Maraga is seriously considering it for next year. And the entire Alclamana School District will be on a block schedule for the upcoming school year. So this is our first year of full implementation. We actually have what's considered a modified block schedule. Only four days of the week are blocked. And every Monday is a full seven-period day in your typical, your traditional periods in terms of time. Under the block, the periods are either 55 or 63 minutes, so hovering around an hour, as opposed to the 45 minutes that we traditionally used. And so in December of this school year, we surveyed our students and staff members to get feedback on the block schedule and how it was going for them. And these are the numbers of the various groups that we surveyed. Prior to the meeting, you received the data regarding the results. So I'm not going to spend a ton of time, I think we might need to go back one.
You need to go one up one.
Maybe? No? Okay.
Yep, we're good.
Just keep getting lost.
That's all right.
So I'm not going to read each slide and the numbers. I'll just hold the slide up there for a couple of seconds and give you an opportunity to review it. Where's the next one? Why don't we just.
It's on the mic. Do you want me to just scroll through?
Sure. And then there's one more of the student survey results I need. Included with the survey results for, for, in the survey for, for the students, at the end of the survey, we asked a total of 11 questions. I highlighted the ones, just, I just pulled out a few to highlight here. But at the end, students had the opportunity to add comments, and we had pages and pages involving of comments. This is from the teacher survey. Different than the student survey, at the end of each question, teachers had the opportunity to respond as opposed to all at the end. You can go ahead. The comments at the bottom are comments that were pulled from the teacher survey. Or I should say staff. So based on the survey results, we have a lot of opportunities and things that we need to look at in terms of managing differently for next year and possibly look for opportunities to pilot a different type of schedule this year so that we can be in the best position to start the year with the schedule that works best. However, overwhelmingly, we heard from both staff and students that the core classes are too long. On most days, students spend, well, some days, students spend between two to almost three hours in core. And at, in the middle school setting, that tends to just be way too long for both of those groups. The single lunch, as you can see, there are demographics of students that aren't super excited about it. But it was interesting to see that the sixth graders overwhelmingly liked it compared to the seventh and eighth graders. And our speculation is that that's all they know.
Right.
You know, they've experienced the two lunches, and it seems like everything's okay to them. We also have opportunities to continue to, to implement project-based learning within our classrooms. I think with one of the comments, when asked about this question, one of the teachers mentioned that, you know, without the time to actually make it happen, they'd be, no, thank you. And so we will be sending, I think it's seven or eight teachers to a project-based learning workshop this summer in Napa. Four of our teachers went last year and found it to be very valuable. So we're continuing to, to make that happen. Throughout the discussions of the survey results and how we can do things differently and better, there has been some thoughts about developing houses and teams of teachers where teachers share cohort groups of students. And that way, they could work on interdisciplinary projects and also collaborate about specific students and particular projects and share responsibilities for a variety of assignments. And an idea that has come up, which is similar to the Meramonte schedule, is building in a period in the day of what is typically called an advisory period or a flex period, where students have time where they can work on something that's important or relevant to them at the time. If they need to make up a test, they have flexibility to go to a classroom to do that. If they want to work on a project for a particular class, they can use that time to accomplish it. So it's supervised time, but unstructured in terms of what specific the students would work on. But there are a lot of pieces to this puzzle. And there, you know, every decision impacts multiple groups and possibilities in terms of scheduling. And so, as I mentioned, we'll be meeting with the advisory committee later this month and begin the work of analyzing the data deeply and, you know, coming up with realistic options that we can use for next year.
Perfect presentation. Butting to the board.
I have a few. So thankfully for all of us, I had a whole bunch of questions, and I put them down on my little thing. I forgot to save them.
So I should expect the phone call.
So I got a little confused reading the comments. It was like, yes, I really like it. No, I really hate it. Do you have more time? Yes, I really do. No, I really don't. So I got a little confused about that. I wonder if you have any thoughts about that.
Yes. So based on the two and a half years of planning for this and working with teachers through the pilot and through the current year, we find that how people feel about certain aspects of the block schedule can be subject-specific. It can be grade-specific. And it can be associated for some with how long they've been in the profession. And so, you know, depending on what the question is, it could be a different demographic answering it in that way. So that's what we attribute that to. Yeah, people don't universally like it on every level.
Well, that was clear. I, I also was, I developed a concern for the core teachers who it seemed were feeling kind of adrift and needing more support. And I'm wondering what suggestions you might have if you're considering any question, changes for next year? Because, as you said, overwhelmingly, pretty much everybody thought the core was too long, particularly the students. So how might that change to make the experience better for both the students and the teachers?
So that's a great question. And one of the goals of the advisory committee is going to be to thoughtfully address that. I met with core teachers along with another department to talk about just that issue. There are ideas that need to be seriously considered. There are probably at this point about three that, models that are truly viable to address it. I'm reluctant to put things out there right here, right now, because, you know, misinformation is going to go rampant. And we'd like to have a better opportunity to actually explore each of those options to see if, one, they're logistically possible, and then, two, will it truly address the need? One thing that I did say in my meeting with the teachers is that this is glaringly a problem, and doing nothing about it is just a huge mistake. And so, you know, we definitely want to be thoughtful about it, but we also, you know, want to be sure that we're doing something reasonable to address it.
Thank you.
Those are all the questions I can bring then. I had a few questions. Following up on that question that Cara was mentioning. Will there be any kind of test or pilot this year for whatever modifications the advisor committee might have? I think we said we were.
Yes, ideally, that's the goal. It, it takes some time to, you know, develop a schedule that will truly work. And for most people, I think it is probably unrealistic to find a schedule that's going to be perfect for everybody. But, you know, there are certain goals that we want to accomplish with the block schedule, and we want to pick a schedule or identify a schedule that will meet most of those goals.
Okay. And then my other question related to professional development.
Yes.
For teachers in terms of, you know, maximizing their, you know, use of this extended time. And, you know, what, what you did before this was implemented, and, you know, what you're continuing to do or what you plan to do. You know, what you did before this was implemented and, you know, what you're continuing to do or what you plan to do.
So last year, we spent a lot of time at staff meetings and offering opportunities for teachers to go to various conferences related to project-based learning. That in order to truly implement a block schedule well within a class, it is very difficult to teach like we may have taught many, many years ago. Or the experience that we had in school isn't just going to fit into a block schedule. It takes, and I think you might have seen a comment from a teacher, it took rethinking of what I'm trying to accomplish here in order to be successful. And so, you know, continuing to work with teachers, offering opportunities, there's very little we say no to when people come to us saying, you know, we need this to help us do our job better. And so, you know, making sure that people take advantage of those opportunities.
And on the lunch issue with the sixth grader.
Yes.
She's totally fine with her work kettle now, the chow and the, I'm looking tomorrow, actually. You know, for the sixth graders, it does seem seamless, but I have seen some in the past.
Michael, I just want to say that I'm truly so supportive of you doing this. I think this has been a great transition for OIS. And I think like anything that's a big change, it just takes time. And it obviously takes, you know, time for people to adapt to the longer, less superior. It does take, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're giving the teachers the support they need to modify their teaching and how they're working the classrooms so that they do have. And I do think it's a learning curve, just like with anything else, that, you know, any change that people undergo. I do like the idea, I mean, Meramonte does do a lot of, you know, seven-period support for math or lunchtime support for that. And they're building in that.
Embedded tutorial.
Right, thank you. The embedded tutorial into the new block schedule. So I think that, you know, that would be interesting to look at. And maybe that's some, you know, how that would be impacted for time. And I think you're, it sounds like you're very on top of what the issues are, having piloted for a year. Is that the right modifications? It will just continue to get better. So I just think as, you know, from our standpoint, from my standpoint, it's just making sure that we're supporting the school and the teachers to the extent that we can to make sure that we're getting everything we need.
I absolutely.
That's a lovely question.
Yeah, no, I agree. And the one comment I read in the survey that upset, was disappointing to me was that the block schedule, what teacher said was creating divisiveness amongst the teachers. And that's concerning because obviously, we would like to have a cohesive unit. Not that everybody's going to agree on everything. But I'm very appreciative of your reviewing what you've been doing and willing to make changes. Anything new is hard. And I can tell you that the seven-period day schedule has been there since I went to OIS and hasn't changed a lot. So this is a huge change for our community and for our teachers and for our students. And I absolutely understand that it will take time to embrace it. But I hope that some of the things we were hoping to have as outcomes, such as reduced stress, more project-based learning, less homework, all those things will continue to be something that we can strive to achieve. And that's why I'm very happy to have you being reviewing this whole process and coming back to us with a modification to make it work better for our school. Because, you know, we all know it's a best practice, so we're excited to see it happen. But that doesn't mean that the exact practice is the right one for OIS, so.
And it's a challenge.
And it is a challenge.
Doing all those pieces together.
But we are, I feel very supportive of all the efforts you and all the teachers and students are making to make this change work. Because in the long run, I hope that it will be something really beneficial for learning.
I just want to really support the statements and the courage for sharing the comments that you did. This was a very thorough report. And it's really important that teachers and students have that voice in this process. And there are some mixed signals. And I'm like Hillary, I have a vocal sixth grader at home and he's definitely in the 85% here about core. And, you know, that's just part of the learning process and that that's being voiced and thought of and thoughtfully worked through like this. I just want to commend you for that. Thank you for spending the time and all the teachers for spending the time to try to make this work.
With that, do we have some comments from the public? No comments from the public? Any more from the board?
I do really appreciate the update because I have it in the back of my mind also. Wow, we didn't even get that update. So I was just really blessed to be on the agenda this month.
And having curriculum and issues like this at the center of our agenda, I think this was really cool.
And I also appreciated the reflection of the deeds of the special needs students also in the survey. Because obviously, this kind of a change affects those students perhaps in a different way than the other students. And so, appreciated you recognizing that in the survey as well.
The advisory committee, that advisory period, sounds like a really interesting idea. So we'll look forward to seeing what you come up with. Nope. Well, we got our public comment.
Let me pop off for a minute. We put the, you put the school scores up on the board. I think one of the things that the students really look at is what people do rather than what they say. If this could, working this out could be sort of done in a way that students could see how you handle with a really difficult problem?
Thank you. All right. Well, we're on a mid-schedule, but I think maybe should we take a five-minute break? We're ready for that.